We'll come to order. This is the February 24, 2025, regular meeting at the time and place as advertised. Counselor Specklemeyer will be joining us remotely tonight. Counselor, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. You're coming through well. Appreciate that. Our next order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. We're going to be leading the pledge tonight by John Michael. Please gratefully agree to do that. So John Michael, please. Touch the flag and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
... allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public which stands one nation, other individuals, and the citizens who are just for all.
Thank you. Thank you, John Michael. Our next order of business is citizen comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the council on agenda items or other items they wish to. During to the attention of the council, citizens are encouraged to discuss operational issues in advance with the mayor. In consideration of others wishing to speak, please limit your comments to three minutes. Also, the Lewiston City Council pledges to practice and promote civility within the governing body advocating for civil engagement, respecting others and their viewpoints, and finding solutions for the betterment of the city of Lewiston. Are there any citizen comments tonight? If so, please come up to the stand. We just need your name and city of residence, and I'll turn the floor over to you. Welcome.
Mayor.
You're going to have to get right up on that. Dr. Cray, thank you.
My name is Julie Cray, and I'm a citizen of Lewiston. Currently serve as the chairperson of the committee was established over a decade ago with the goal of reviewing the city's audit function and our role is to provide recommendations. The committee consists of two council members along with several local citizen members, including myself. Times per year with the city's director of finance, other city staff, and then the independent elected auditor. My pleasure to review the process followed by both the city staff and the independent auditors and found that the comprehensive annual financial report presented to you is highly detailed and reflects adherent to the intended audit. Additionally, I'd like to highlight for the past year's report, the Government Finance Officers Association of the U.S. and Canada awarded the city of Lewiston a certain excellence for financial reporting thirty-third consecutive year. This prestigious national recognition is awarded to local governments that meet the highest standards. Citizens have questions or comments for this report, they are welcome to reach out to any member of the committee or directly to the auditors.
Thank you, Julie. That's great news. Any more citizen comments tonight? You're welcome to stand up at the microphone. And Michael? Welcome.
John Michael Lewis.
Cross is self-righteous. I don't certainly don't want to.
Yeah. I walk him in the parks a lot, and I was over at Pioneer Park, and I, well, I don't know if you've seen, there's a homeless guy that hates out over there. He's very isolative. But this is a very cold night, and I went in the bathroom, and I was, and he was in there. And I was glad to see that he was in there. They had a. But I don't know how to perceive. Anybody lonely? Anybody sad? I don't think he's cutting out. I keep. Well, okay. Can you hear me? Is that all right, or do I need to be on the mic?
We need you on the microphone so those at home can hear what you have to say.
Okay. Glad he had a place to stay. I stopped by and talked to the coroner today, and it's a loneliness crisis, trust me, but we have a big fentanyl problem. Okay? And we have a homeless problem. The homelessness overall in America raised fifteen percent in one year. Okay? That's a housing crisis, but that's also a loneliness crisis. Okay? When he started, first started his job in 2017, there were eight overdoses in Lewiston, and none of them were fentanyl. And every year, it's been going up. 2024, we had twelve overdoses, and ten of them were fentanyl. 2021 and 22 both had six fentanyl overdoses. So it's.
Falling very quickly.
So what's, what is to be done? I don't think there's really a policing solution or a political solution. We've got to care about each other. And that's, that's the only solution I see. And how do you show a person you care about them? Well, you know, you know, you give them a safe place to sleep. You give them maybe a place to congregate where they can hang out and not feel ashamed of themselves. You don't try and push them off somewhere this way or push them off somewhere that way. Treat them like, like human beings. I've been a lot outraged, and last five years, I've lost three friends. I mean, very good friends. Two of them overdoses, and one who was able to come off the map, but died essentially of self, self neglect. So if you're going through your day, and everybody is glancing away from you, not talking to you, and, you know, I'm not judging, but people have their fears, you know, there's a lot of drugs, and there's, there's violence and those kind of. But the young kids that are out there, you know, it's, it's, it has a huge effect. The young women and many of the young men, they're prostituting themselves every day, just to get enough money to get that drug. Affects crime rate, affects how many people we have in jail, suicide rate. It's not a good deal. So I was involved in the Reach Out Center when I was out there, and it was the place for people to congregate. And I think overall did a lot of good. I wish they would have held stronger against the community that was pushing back at them. I mean, there were some garbage problems and stuff like that, but I mean, who's perfect, right? We're all human, and we all deserve that dignity, and we've got to give it to ourselves. We're a shame-based society. Nobody really likes themselves too well, so we try and, you know, puff ourselves up with money or power, those kind of things. We're still only, right? We need to build a community, a community that's for everyone, not just the rich or powerful, or those with money, or those who like steady things. It's got to be for everybody. Okay, that's it on that. Just two more things.
Okay, that's four and a half minutes.
Okay, that's too much. I want Bengal Field to be a city, and I also want fluoride out of the water.
All righty, thank you, John. Appreciate you being here. Thank you. John Michael, if you want to contact my office at some point, I can give you an update on some of the programs. Yeah, I can share some things with you, so. Thank you. Further citizen comments tonight? Okay, we'll move on to presentations. Item A, January financial report, financial report for January 31, 2025, in accordance with Idaho Code 50-208. There is no oral report here. Counselors, unless you have a question, otherwise I would entertain a motion to approve, because I don't think it's, oh, that's going to be on. So we've already done that. Nothing else, of course, Director? Today, okay. We'll move to Romanural 5, Public Hearing to Related Action Items. Item A, Public Hearing, Pioneer Park, Accepting Testimony in the Pioneer Park Resiliency Upgrades Project and the Progress of the Idaho Community Development Block Grant CARES Funding. This is an action item, and we have our Community Development Director, Shannon Grow, with us tonight. Preliminary matters, I will open the public hearing. We will have a presentation from Director Grow. We will accept testimony from the public. Counselors, if you have questions of the staff or any persons providing testimony, please do so at this time, because no additional evidence or testimony may be received once the public hearing is closed. So once again, this is your time to ask questions. After that, I will close the public hearing. So with that, I will open this public hearing and turn it over to Director Grow. Welcome, Shannon.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Shannon Grow, Community Development Director, Interim Parks Director. So tonight, I'm presenting for the Pioneer Park upgrades to the playground and ADA parking. City was able to get CARES funding for this $250,000, and it's on a reimbursable basis. Oh, this, sorry. Okay, the purpose of this hearing is that we are here to inform the public about the process or the project, talk about financial and updates, and then gather any community feedback that we might have tonight. So the importance of this project is enhancing the park's safety and accessibility, supporting the community health and outdoor recreation, aligning with some ADA compliance efforts, community revitalization and social cohesion, long-term sustainable development, and CARES funding helps prevent widespread economic collapse by providing direct financial assistance to low-income neighborhoods. The breakdown of the budget, you will see that on the right, the CARES funding comes to just under $244,000. The city does planning and administration. The city also has, if you've been out to Pioneer Park lately, you also see that the city has done a lot of takedown of the existing playground equipment in order to prepare the site for the equipment to come. So we're replacing aging playground equipment, improving ground surface for safety, installing ADA drink fountain, fountain, and also two ADA parking spaces. The timeline is that the planning and design happened last summer. Bid process and contracting was last fall. The site preparation, as I just talked about, and equipment removal was in December, and we are in contact with Northwest Playground, and we are anticipating that they are coming early March, which, for those of you who don't know, is next, which is crazy. And we put May 2025 for the ADA parking completion. I'm, I'm pretty sure it's going to be before that, just having to wait for concrete, and then wrap this up in June. The site plan, if you will, or concept drawing of the ADA parking stall, the site drawing of where those parking, I'm sorry, playground equipment will be placed to park overlaid on the existing park. Pictures here that show what the equipment is going to look like, and which ones, the ones with the stars have are the inclusive play. I have a lot of very small text on them, but this is what the playground is eventually going to look like. If you're wondering where the removed playground equipment will go, most of it is going to Rotary Peace Park, to the south in this area over here. And the Rotarians are very excited for this addition to the park. Got questions about this? Melinda Rose is really the project manager on this, and she was the one who was successful in acquiring the funds for the city. And I will answer any questions.
Thank you, Director. Let's see if there's anyone from the public that has testimony on this project. Please. Yeah. Yeah, welcome.
Do I have to use the microphone? I'm, oh, hi. Okay, I'm Megan. I live in Lewiston. I am the current tenant, Lisi, person at the Carnegie Library in Pioneer Park, so I'm highly invested in all of the things that occur there. And I just want to say that, first off, the children are very excited. They were a little upset at first, but once they found out what was happening. So I think it's amazing to have the ADA option. That accessibility is so important. I guess the only thing I would add to any of this, just to be a little tiny bit sticky, which the mayor and I have already talked about this, is just the, the tree stumps that are still there, as maybe as this ongoing improvement to the park goes. Also want to add that, yes, I know there's people unhoused and people that need that space, like you had brought up, but I've, I've just noticed that with all of the work that the city has done over the last six months to the park, beyond what's going on with the playground, there has just been an incredible decrease in vandalism, and the park is just, I just want to spread the word that it's a safe, beautiful place to be. And this is really a huge, a huge thing that's happening, and we're so excited. Last thing is that I did have somebody tell me once, not too long ago, that Pioneer Park is like our central park. It's so important to our city. And so the fact that it's getting this attention and this love, and this opportunity is just, it's really huge. So we're super excited, and as somebody who basically lives there, I just wanted to throw in my little two cents on that. So thank you.
Thank you, Megan. John, John Michael, I need you for the record. Could you introduce yourself, and then you can speak, please?
Is your, you know, the sidewalk that goes downtown there, is that a part of the park? Okay, it wouldn't be there. And is it going to be taking up more room? The.
The playground?
Yeah.
Shannon, I need you closer to one of the mics, because people listening at home need to hear what we have to say. Thank you.
I don't believe so.
Okay, thank you. That's it. More flowers.
Thank you. Yes, sir, please.
Michael Yulencott, Lewiston, Idaho. Yes, I'm related to all of them. In regards to the water fountain, is that going to be a water bottle filler?
I believe so.
Yes, get the fluoride out of the water.
Is that what he was asking about? Okay, that's a good start. Any other comments? Okay, counselors, do you have questions for either Director Grow or would like to address any of the citizen comments we received? Counselor Specklemeyer?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I guess I'm getting a beep here, but I have a question about the Rotary. Will the Rotary go in the installation of the?
I think the question was, will the Rotary Club help with the installation of the equipment at Rotary Peace Park?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, there's going to be materials that will be needed to install those pieces. The actual install will be done by the city, but the additional materials that are needed to do the install will be paid for by the Rotarians.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor.
Counselor Clayber, or Counselor Fordham, sorry.
First of all, I want to apologize for my cough. I was getting over flu with my daughter. Kids are getting constantly sick, so I'm trying to get over this cough, so I'll try to contain as best as I can. But do we have a answer for her on the stumps or a time of line where we're going to be able to address that issue?
I do not have an answer for that.
Able to get one? Okay, perfect. As long as we continually address it and get that going, that's, that's my only concern.
Thank you, Counselor. Other comments, questions from the council? Counselor Wright?
Yeah. The block grant CARES funding, how does that work?
So there's different, there are different flavors of CARES funding. A lot of it came through different, different federal sources. This one came through the block grant, and I believe it came through commerce. And so the city did have to apply for it. So it was discretionary funding rather than what sometimes we see as allocated money.
And so we spend the money, and then this reimburses us, or this money?
That's correct. That's how most of them work.
Okay. Good job taking the initiative. Thank you.
Hey, counselors, if there's no further comments, I'm going to close the public hearing. Our next item is item B, Public Hearing on the 2025 Transportation CIP, Accepting Public Testimony on the 2025 Transportation Capital Improvement Plan. This is an action item, and we have our Public Works Director here with us tonight, Dustin Johnson. Again, we are going to have a hearing, so I will open the public hearing. We'll hear from Director Johnson, accept any testimony from the public. Again, counsel, this will be your opportunity to ask questions. After that, I will close the public hearing. So I will open the public hearing and turn the floor over to Director Johnson. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Dustin Johnson, Public Works Director. I apologize. There's a lot, a lot of housekeeping we're going to be doing here tonight, so if I get a little long-winded, just cut me off and let me know we need to move forward. So this is action we take every February since we adopted the transportation plan about five years ago. And so to kind of basically talk about what this is and why we're here, the capital improvements plan, you'll hear me talk about it as being CIP, is a prioritized ranking of the projects within our transportation's network. And so they've identified areas of concern or projects of interest. And so this is the process in which we use the criteria that we originally ranked them in 2020 and update them as new, as projects are completed, or we get feedback from the public, or projects are improved or changed throughout the time. And so this is our opportunity annually to address our concerns and take feedback from the public. And so this is more often than not an opportunity for us to talk about our arterials, our main projects, our big projects, but it also gives us an opportunity to hear about areas, and I'll get into some of these, where maybe something slipped through the cracks, or maybe there's been a surge of accidents in a particular area, and the public gives us an opportunity to, gives us the opportunity to hear from the public about their concerns. And so what we're doing tonight is going over what's changed, kind of what the criteria tells us where these roads and facilities sit, and then kind of pick up where we left off in 2024 in the rankings. So I'm going to go as quickly as I can through what we've covered and what we're going to cover in the, in the year, kind of cover some high, high-level concerns that we've got. So what have we done since we've talked last? We've completed the fiber seal on 21st Street. You'll see that had an impact on where 21st Street lies according to the criteria. The MPO performed the Thane Corridor Study, Metropolitan Planning Organization, so they did a full thorough analysis of the accesses and kind of analyzed the traffic data and accident data on Thane Corridor, came back with some potential solutions, which will be. be, I'll need the council to vet those out, where those should rank tonight. Concept for design for Main Street, a lot of that's not just transportation, but utilities with underneath Main Street. And then I think there's actually one on our agenda tonight, but I think we're about three or four sidewalk grants in the queue in one, one form of another between design and construction. Moving forward, Main Street, looks like we're, we'll talk about it next week at the work, work session, but moving forward, unless you tell us otherwise, for Main Street Bond in the spring of 2025. In this year's budget, the current budget that we're operating under, we included a East Lewiston Network Analysis. And so if you remember, we talked about the far, far reach of Brighton, where it kind of ended off into Lindsay Creek. And so we have some issues where we have lack of connection, where our right-of-ways either go into canyons, or they've been vacated in the past. And so as we're growing out in East Orchards, we want to do a deeper dive into what those, what that network needs to, to, wrote. Brighton Avenue has completed its environmental phase as we're closing that out. Road is programmed for construction FY25. I say FY25, it's gonna be on the far end of 25, so it's probably gonna be obligated in this year, but construction will probably happen next year. And then one, one more thing as we're looking forward into the future, one, one area in the CIP that does attract a lot of attention is sidewalks. And so there's two, I can't remember where they rank, the rank in the teens, there's a couple, tens of millions of dollars broken into two different sidewalk projects. The Sidewalk Master Plan is essentially a spreadsheet from 2008. I don't feel adequately serves our need. And so moving into next year's budgeting process, I'd like to, and maybe there's some processes before the budget, like working with our PWA, our Public Works Advisory Council to further refine, but I think we want to do a deeper dive into how we prioritize sidewalk. Obviously sidewalks around schools, commercial nodes, and neighborhoods are important. And so I think we need to do a side project besides this large CIP to look at the, look at the sidewalks. All right. So if you're watching at home or in first time in this, you're wondering, how are these projects ranked? Ranked? And so when this process was established five years ago, it was very important to make sure that when you looked at the list, you could say, oh, that makes sense, that you weren't picking a small block of airway where there's 25 cars a day, number one, where Thane or Brighton or Main Street was clear on the bottom. And so we wanted to make sure, you can look at the general criteria that, you know, we looked at mobility and safety and livability, and all of these things change. Over time, the roads wear out, they get fixed, businesses come, traffic patterns change. And so you're constantly evaluating these things, these criteria to find out where you're ranking. And so there's two ways that they're ranked. And it's, being an engineer, you're looking at the hard criteria that you can stand behind and say, okay, its pavement index is this, it's got this many cars a day, and it's got this many accidents. I can give you a number or a grade or whatever you want, but then there's everything else. There's the users, there's the people that use it every day, and they are the ones who provide us the feedback to help us balance out this list. So there's a hard portion of actual engineering and science, then there's a portion of, what do the actual users want? And so that's kind of the goal of this process, is to make sure it's, it's not slanted in one direction, but at the same time giving the public an opportunity to come in and say, this street is the most important one because X, Y, and Z. And so that's what this process is. In front of you is, is, I think, we've cleaned it up a little bit, but you've seen this before. This is a circular process in which we go through every year and starts, it'll start, I guess you can say today is the start, but it's a loop. So we always, we're always looking for feedback, we're always looking for public comment, but at some point we have to close the book, update the projects, and then adopt them. But here we are on February 24th, and this is the public hearing, but you can see, we'll start this all over again in November, call for projects, we'll start drafting CIP, we'll have open houses, we'll have air times for public comment. And so the first part is when we go for call for projects. And so the intent for this, this starts in November, when we open up the decks and we say, what are we missing? What, what projects have we not identified? And I get it, and maybe the next time we kind of update our, our transportation plan, we can make it a little bit clearer, because I think from my perspective, I see this all the time, somebody who is getting solicited these questions, they're saying, I don't know what you're asking for. So a lot of times you see, you need to fix this pothole, that's not really a capital project, but, you know, we try and get as much as we can out of them. And so you can see crosswalks at Centennial, sidewalks on 10th, bike path repairs, this is one of those that slips between the cracks. Somebody came to us and said, hey, if you use that shared use path on, you know, that goes along the levee, on the south side of Southway Bridge, it's really bad, you guys should fix that. And we said, well, that's not ours, that's the core. Well, we did some digging, it actually is, there's an agreement between the Army Corps and the city to fix it. So again, the process, this wasn't intended to find this, but we did identify that we have some, some maintenance that we get, we have to address. Public comment on reducing Brighton from a planned five lane to a three lane, and pedestrian safety improvements on Borough, Thane, and 12th. But that was the call for projects. And so then we bundle all that together and we issue the new draft CIP. And so then that goes back out for more public comment, kind of similar vein as what those comments were, reconstruction of Fifth to Main Street, Main Street to Seventh. And so if anybody's ever driven going up Fifth Street Grid, I use it every single day, and you get very bumpy, and if you're drinking coffee, it's now on your lap. I got a lot of very interesting history on that. That road, the base was actually built in 20, in the 20s. That was, that's a type of construction that we no longer use called McAdam. It was cut for all those utilities, for everybody's service lines, and the pavement on top of it is, is degrading faster than the actual 1920s McAdam. We were actually doing cores when I was putting together this spreadsheet, or not the spreadsheet, the PowerPoint, and so we will be addressing that this summer. We're just trying to figure out how much we gotta mill without actually wrecking the road. And then one public comment on Main and D Street, preference to keep them one ways and no roundabouts. I'm gonna dive into, we talked about federal allocation, the federal STP, came now to STBG, because why go with three letters when you have four? And these are allocations for, this is how we fund some of these major projects that we have in the past. And so those three in front of you, Snake River Avenue, Ninth Street Grade, Brighton, that's kind of where we're at. And I already said that Snake River Avenue is, is queued up from the roundabout, Southway Roundabout to 11th, that's the next one that will be under construction, and that, like I said, probably starting in the spring of '26, there may be some winter work to prep it, but that's the next one out the gate. After that is Ninth Street Grade, which is tabled, I think, for '27, so '27, '28. And then you have Brighton Avenue that we've talked about a little bit in the past. And so Brighton Avenue Phase Two is technically shouldn't be on this list because it is not, there's no funds allocated, it's, I mean, with all the three projects in front of it, it's, it has to wait its turn to get funding. Brighton Avenue Phase One, we have completed the design or in the process of completing the design, now we're into the environmental. There'll actually be a supplemental contract in front of you in about a month to kind of close out the ends. There was a request from staff or council to do an analysis on that three lane versus five lane. And so once all those loose ends are wrapped up, then we go back and go the waiting line for the funds to build back up, and that will probably be 2031, when we can start doing right-of-way acquisition. So Brighton is definitely not moving the quickest or nimblest. So you'll see Snake River, Ninth Street Grade should be moving here quickly in the next two or three years, but there's that break where, you know, we'll, we'll have spent the money on those two projects, and then we will have to be waiting for Brighton to, to build up or find an alternative design or an alternative funding source. Real quickly, just gonna call out some of these high-level projects that we, we had kind of a dramatic shift. The first one would be 21st Street. We tried a new method of construction, a fiber slurry on 21st. So you can see the top picture, what it looked like before, the bottom picture looks what it looks like now. This is right in front of Sonic. Thus far, it looks to be successful, but the true test will be, how long will those ruts stay out? But you can see, just based off of the installation of ADA ramps, some sidewalk improvements and then overlay, the pavement condition, it went from number four to number 23, so that's, that's good, but not to say that it's all the way off the list. There's still work of the subgrade to be done. Thane and Warner, it is, was identified in that Thane Corridor Study. We did receive a lot of public comment. What's interesting about it, and I think it was in the newspaper, how it doesn't feel like it functions well, and it functions fine with a regular traffic flow, but it, you know, high school getting out, or football game, or anything else, it doesn't really handle surged, surged traffic volume very well. I, that, it moved up, you can't see it on there, but it's in the 20s. Brighton Phase One, kind of talked about it, last year, council moved it down to number eight, based off of all the criteria up there with lack of sidewalk, lack of ADA ramps, pavement condition, traffic, safety, the criteria would rank it as number one. Same thing with Phase Two, it would be number two. So last year, Brighton Phase One and Two went from one and two to eight, nine. Now, criteria would say it would be two of what we talked about. Last year, Main Street typically is in the top five, one, two, or three. Last year, we left it, or council put it at one, I think it's at three or four, I can't, my glasses aren't on, but still in the top five regardless of the criteria. So what are we here to do tonight? Review and consider public comments. So I will stop talking. Public may provide comment or not. And then I've got the spreadsheet. So last year, if you remember, we got really confused about how we wanted to move the sheets. I have the spreadsheet. We can move these projects in real time. Basically, the way, I gave you the, kind of a refined list from what was published, because you had the list in the packet that was by the criteria. Then the one I sent Friday is by last year's ranking, and then I just kind of put those Thane Corridor Studies right behind Brighton, so eight, nine, so all those, there's like four, five, six, seven, however many Thane Corridor Studies, we can leave them where you, where they are, or we can move them according to how you want to do it, but, and then you adopt the 2025 CIP. So at this point, I will step away, give the public an opportunity to weigh in, and then I'll come back and we can answer questions and we can start having a fantasy football draft.
Thank you, Director. Thank you, Director. Is anyone in person here tonight from the public that would like to speak? Yeah, please, welcome. Yes. Introduce yourself to the record, just your name and city of residence.
My name is Jenna Coffey. I actually live in Clarkston Heights. I wanted to encourage you to put better signage on the crosswalk. When you turn from Brighton onto Thane, I go to Crosspoint Church, and so I do that turn a lot. And last November, I made that turn, thought I had a right turn on red, it must have changed just as I turned, and all of a sudden, there's a pedestrian in front of me. And so the accident report is in your records, if you look for it. Thankfully, just hit his bicycle and knocked him down, but didn't cause serious damage to him or even his bicycle, but scared the tar out of me and him too. And as I've driven that since, I drove past it today, there are absolutely no signs, if you're coming down Thane toward Crosspoint Church, there are no signs for that crosswalk. And that crosswalk's in a bad spot because when you turn off of Brighton, is it 11th that's right there? I think 11th or 12th, anyway, comes right off, and then the crosswalk is kind of from the Maverick to the Mexican Restaurant. And so I had more than one person say to me, where's the crosswalk there? I mean, people don't even know it's there, and there's absolutely no signs. And so I think for the safety of the motorists and the poor drivers like me, that it needs one of those blinky ones, you know, where the people can not only push the button to get the, okay, you get to cross, but that it tells the drivers, somebody's gonna be in that crosswalk because it's not, the pedestrian is not right there when you're turning. On most places, if there's pedestrian in the crosswalk, they're just right there and you see them, but not at that intersection. So I would plead with you to spare the next pedestrian and the next driver by marking that crosswalk better.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there further citizen comments tonight? John Michael?
Just one question. I mean, it's obvious to me, I drive around town a lot, and Brighton, that's, that's a tough spot, getting in and off of that street from essentially any side street, depending on time of day. And you said it was moved to seven to eight from one to two. I mean, is there a prob, are we bumping that, the back, that back up? I mean, is that the plan, or? To me, it's an obvious question, but is that something you're thinking seriously about?
Further citizen comments?
Michael Yulencott, Lewiston. I agree with, what was your name? Jenna. Definitely encourage you guys to get more of the solar-powered crosswalk blinkers for every school. I see those in Clarkston, and I think they work very well, so I encourage you guys to get more funding for those. And then for Dustin to ask about, I can ask you later about a different street project.
Further citizen comments? Okay, and I'll say for folks who are watching from home, if you have comments, please let us know. You can email us, for sure. You can email to the mayor's office or Public Works Director, but this is an important topic, and we need to hear from you. So if you haven't had a chance yet to provide comments, please consider doing so, sending us an email on it. Counselor questions first, Director Johnson or the public?
I didn't quite grasp. Sorry, Mayor, thank you. I didn't quite grasp John Michael's question that you just had earlier, so sorry.
Yeah. So he's asking, he's saying, correct me if I'm not, if I'm wrong, but he, my impression is he says those are, those, Brighton is important, it's hard to get on that street, are we moving it up tonight?
It used to be a one, two, we're gonna do it to seven and eight in the report, so I'm taking.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Forstman?
Dustin, how much are the blinking crosswalk signs on average?
I don't have a number off the, I mean, I don't have a number off the top of my head.
I dare you not hold random numbers in your head.
We bundle them together because usually you want, you want them facing different, you know, at minimum, you want two because you've got two-lane traffic. Sometimes you want advanced warnings, so, solar, and a lot of times you can get those in green. I'd have to go back and look at the last couple that we purchased.
Okay. Is there a way to add that into projects on here with areas where we should have like auto add?
Yeah, a lot of these, if you look at the project type, I actually hid the description because I'm trying to get so much on the screen, you know, a lot of these things would be considered. Specifically just advanced warning for crosswalks, we'll put those on our maintenance, because we don't want to see, a lot of this stuff, like a case in point, would be Brighton. If there's something we can go out there today and scrape a crosswalk or work with a Vista and light an intersection, we'll get working on that outside of the 12 or $17 million project. It's, you know, I want all of this, but also, you know, trying to rank the capital projects and say, this is, you know, because like I said, Brighton is gonna take decades to do, I can get a crosswalk done as long as it stops raining.
Okay. So we could start knocking those out?
Yep, yep.
Aside from this, basically, is what you're saying.
Yeah, and a lot of, I mean, some of this stuff, as, you know, was identified within... Yeah, and a lot of, I mean, some of this stuff, as, you know, was identified within the corridor study, because these were, you know, asked, you know, so here's one, this is Thane and Burl, they're all kind of similar, access control, restriping and safety, had the conversations about the raised medians or restricted, those are larger capital, or more, more capital, I guess I'll call them, where we're putting in raised medians and things like that, that's actual construction versus striping and, and.
Hold up unless anybody has another.
Counselor Spicklemeyer?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I get, Director Johnson, first on the, changing the Brighton from five into three, we lose the, they can't?
What?
The funding that we have right now.
No, well, my, well, does Shannon want to come answer this before I put my foot in my mouth? The answer is probably no, but I will let Shannon answer before I get too deep in there.
Repeat his question too, because I don't think a lot of people heard it.
The question is, because this is with STBG funding, federal funding, would we lose the funding if we redesigned from five lanes to three lanes? And the answer is no. The design of the five lane is done, the environmental piece is done, right-of-way has not been purchased, and construction has not been done. What that would take, oftentimes, you know, you get into projects, you design them, and they become unfeasible. You may look at the five-lane section and say, to buy that much right-of-way, to achieve something that we thought it was going to do, maybe that's not feasible for a community. So, it is done sometimes to go into redesign, you certainly would want to do that before you start purchasing right-of-way, but no, I do not believe you would lose that. Keep in mind that the Urban Renewal Agency was part of this as well, and so, that may be not a source for a redesign, or it may be a source, it's hard to say.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Forstman?
Thank you, Mayor. By moving things up on this list, does that help us kind of hone in on it and start working towards grants and funding?
Thank you, that was the one thing, I was trying to take notes before I started, and there were so many things I wanted to cover, and that was one of, why are we ranking them? And so, that's a great question that I didn't cover in my presentation, is, these don't lock you in for anything. As you can see, there's projects that are ranked pretty high on here, that have been on here for many years. This is, when we go for grants, when we, when we apply for STP money, we use this ranking to say, this has been, you know, case in point would be Main Street, it has been number one or in the top three for decades, and so, we use that to say, this is the council and the public process to say, this is the value of it. But, a case in point would be Federal Lands Access Program, which is a, call it a FLAP, it's a federal grant application, where we apply every other year, and those, those are for projects to access federal lands. Lewiston is unique, because we're surrounded by the Lennox, and that's federal land, and so, we have utilized that, like, the Hawk Crossing that's on Snake River Avenue, that was a FLAP grant, we didn't pay for that. That was obviously not the highest and most necessary thing, but that was a project that was identified in the CIP that accessed, it met the criteria of the grant. And so, when I say, oh yeah, I wouldn't fret of like, is that one three, or is that one four, I think the value of it is, our, our emphasis, staff looks at, you know, say, the top 10, and say, okay, we really got to start working, I think last year, Meyer moved Burl from the 40s to five, and so, we've started moving in that direction, not to say that we have funding available for that, but Burl, you know, the, the fourth to 12, that was one now that we're saying, okay, if that's going to stay in the top five, that means staff and, you know, we're going to start moving the budgets and the planning in that direction. One big thing is, these, you can see the numbers on these, these are not small projects, and so, I always try and warn the council, this is not something where you want to take Burl, or even Brighton, and this year, it's one, tomorrow, it's 128th, it's going to be fifth, like, we want to stay consistent, because it takes decades, maybe not always decades, but years, up to decades, to get these projects moving. We're moving the list too dramatically, it doesn't really do us any favor.
I don't have any issue being Burl up, like, that was lower than it was.
I mean, if we're using, so, ground rules tonight, we're going to use the, what we left off from last year, so the 2024 up on your screen, so Burl is five, from four to 12.
With the lane possibility, right?
Yeah, that's, that's basically reconstruction. Bike routes, bike lanes is what the, right?
Okay, so, that's pretty high up there already. My only concern with it is just, when we had the open house a while ago, there wasn't a lot of positive feedback for going for the five lane.
Brighton?
Or, I'm sorry, Brighton, yes.
Brighton is.
Right, so that's, with it being number one, or being, no, that's number eight. But I, that's my only word of caution, is I would like to see though, more research done on doing like a three lane versus the five lane, and kind of give those people another chance to kind of talk and be involved in the process, those that live on, on that street, because I know some of the businesses and homeowners in the area weren't too keen on the five lane, so, that's my only word of caution with like, treating that as the high, because it doesn't seem like we're quite consensus there.
I, I mean, I, I try, as I've said, to try not to get my opinion in this, because public, and this is the council, you know, and, and as, like I said, as we're trying to plan these, these projects forward, my only frustration with Brighton is that, you know, we've been working on it 20 years. Oh, because it's, it's, the way we fund it, we, we fund it through federal dollars, it takes, and it's now taken us 20 years to get to the final design of Phase One. And I guess my, my feedback would be, I, we do have a amendment to the contract, included in that amendment is in this traffic analysis, to take it, to look at the functionality of a five lane to a three lane, and then anything that would potentially be necessary to, to make that traffic flow. It could, it could flow perfectly fine as three lane, as it is basically now, maybe it's intersection controls, roundabouts, or, or, you know, consolidating some of these access points, I, I don't know. One thing that would tell you truthfully is, if a three lane functions up to, say, design year of 2030, it's probably not wise to build a three lane. I, I will say, looking at the old reports, the traffic volumes, it, I think I gave, the last time I met with you, I showed you how, when Brighton Canyon opened, it virtually doubled, or more than doubled, the traffic volume, it just, the amount of volume, and so, I think people at the time thought it would keep going that direction, and it kind of has plateaued.
Council President Clever?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, getting back to Counselor Forstman's comments, if we, you go back to taking a look at a change in design to a three lane versus a five lane defeats the purpose, the road's almost failing from a service standpoint. And as, as somebody that drives it every day, you know, when you've got traffic backed up from the Fifth Street parking lot, on the west, you know, the westbound lane, almost to Seventh Street every night, to me, it tells me the road's kind of at the point of failing. It's going to cost money to widen it, especially at the constriction between Fourth and, Fourth and Fifth Street. But, you know, to go along with Director Johnson's comments, I mean, I, my first planning and zoning meeting was at the Orchards Community Church in 2003, in November, John Murray was running the meeting, and he had maps, and the place was packed, and people were looking at it, and there were about five different plans, this is what we can do up here. But yeah, that's over 20 years ago, is when this all started. I mean, it's, and it's going to take longer, just because of our funding source, so, I think we stay with it, keep it where it's at, but in order to serve the community for the long run, and I'm not talking, it's like Dustin said, not to buy us until the year 2030, we need to be buying the next 35, 40 years, if we're going to do a major construction on a road, and that's what it's going to take.
Counselor Klein?
Can I just speak on the same, the same subject? So, I am obviously in favor of three lane compared to five lane, I want to see it done. You ride, you drive down the street, and there's potholes, it's, it's very rough. People drive really slow on that road, just because they don't want to tear their car up, and it, the way that, the, the speed we're going at getting the road fixed, if we're looking at five lane, you know, 20 years from now, there's, there's no way, we're going to end up patching it up, it's just going to be a Band-Aid until we can fix it again. If we can focus on having it a three lane, you know, I like the sidewalks, get the sidewalks in there, do everything else that, that the five lane was, was talking about, but limit to, limit to the three lane, maybe look at alternatives for people to go, so not everybody's funneled down Brighton, you know, alleviate some of the traffic that way, different off-ramps off of Brighton Canyon, if that's the way that people are, are going, and I feel like, if we at least keep the, keep Brighton, you know, within the top 10, it helps us focus on that and, and find alternatives, it keeps us, keeps it in our view, so we can keep working towards at least fixing the road, even if it doesn't become a five lane.
Counselors, would you allow more citizen comments? Stay with that, okay, John Michael, please enter, you have to talk to, yeah, yeah.
But, if, let's say, if you put a lot of money into Burl, right, really improve that, got that going well, and then, let's say you take an offshoot road, and somehow get it through, you know, the airport directly to Burl, so, coming up out of the canyon, you could go to either Burl or Brighton, and if both of those are well constructed, then is that a possibility?
Thank you, John Michael. Counselors, further comments? Questions? All right, we got to get to this.
As, as we're starting the Main, 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 Snake River Phase, what we're calling Phase Three, that's Main Street to 11. Phase Two is further down this. Southway is three, 21st is currently four, criteria says it should drop to 23 or five. Add our new projects, so, these are the Thane, Thane and Brighton intersection, Thane, Burl intersection, Thane and Preston, Thane and Seaton. By the criteria, some of them are Thane and Burl, Thane and Brighton, which was spoken about tonight, is, by the criteria, is at 10, where the ones at the bottom are a little bit lower, 7, 6, 3.
Counselor Forstman?
If we're looking at the Main Street construction, and trying to possibly go up for, to bring that to a vote, it seems like that should be on the higher rankings. I thought, when at 2025, we changed it.
By the criteria, it would be three, but just forward, taking what we adopted in 24 to 25.
We're keeping it then, okay, sorry, I misunderstood.
Can I make a comment, Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Wright?
Yeah, I, I wasn't here on the, the background of this, is there anyone on the council, or you, Mr. Mayor, that could provide why we didn't go with the ranking before?
Well, Counselor, I think the short answer is that we went through the same exercise last year, and the council decided to, there was a motion made to move Main Street and D Street up to number one, and it was voted on to reprioritize the projects on that list, and that's what we're tasked to do tonight. So, we're going to, if you have your printout, did you bring your hard copy?
I, I didn't bring the hard copy, but I have it here.
You can have it online there. You can look at the list there, and so, for example, it doesn't mean that we have to go through it, I'm going to look at the, the numbers here. It doesn't mean that we have to go through all 147, 150 projects. In fact, if we attempt to do that, there'll be an uproar, so, so, I guess what I would suggest is maybe just focus at the top five to 10 projects, and see if there's any reordering that needs to be done in that, and then keep in mind what Director Johnson shared with us earlier too, just because it's got a high priority, doesn't mean it captures the funding. We have to go out, and we have to look for different sources of funding to do these projects. It'd be nice, if we had all the money to do this, we don't, and I think we're learning more and more, that it's really going to be up to local government to fund these types of projects and get it done. I don't think the state or the federal government's going to come in and, and do it for us, so, we've, we've got a plan, we have to put this together, and then, when we go through budgets, we need to build our budgets to support the plan, so.
Thank you.
Good night, Mayor.
Counselor Forstman?
I would personally like to see the sidewalk schools central, for me, obviously, schools and sidewalks are big things, those kids, not the greatest at watching for cars, paying attention, they get excited, they're talking to their friends, so, it's really reliant on the drivers to be very vigilant, that these kids are making eye contact, so, I would like to see rank number 31 is where it is right now, I think, unless it's changed on.
Last year, we moved it up to, you moved it up to 14 and 15.
Can I move it even higher?
Yeah, and this one is that those, so, you can see the list, and this is basically, you know, it hasn't been updated, one is 29 million, and one is 15 million, nobody's going to take that on as a single project, that's not, it tells you that we rank sidewalks near schools, half-mile radius, very high, but it doesn't give us any direction as to very specific projects, and so, that was one thing that I want to move forward, between now and probably next year, which there is a budget process between now and then, is to tackle that and make that more of an achievable goal.
Kind of like broken out?
Yeah, break, break them out, and you could probably utilize what we have in the ADA Transition Plan and update our sidewalk plan.
So, would it, would it be beneficial to at least put that in the top 10? I have to, we kind of create anyway.
Point, I, I, I wouldn't worry about it until we can, what I'd really like is, the mayor has already alluded to, I think there's 100 projects on this, we're not paying hardly, I won't say any attention to the number one. So, a lot of these are, trails, or big, bold projects like that, and so, I'd really like to organize these better, so that we can have a better conversation, because there's a time to talk about trails, there's time to talk about sidewalks, and there's time to talk about arterials and collectors in the network, and how we're going to address those efficiencies. So, moving forward, I think we need to do some updates, how we organize our, our planning on this.
Yeah, as long as it's, you know, we have our eyes on it, we're trying to, to get as grants we can, or whatever it is to get it funded, that's my concern.
Counselors, you're going to have a chance to vote on these projects when we get to the funding stage as well, but, you know, even if you look at the first page, the 2024 adopted, of the top nine, five of those top nine are in the top nine, when we rearrange them using the criteria, so, it's not like, even within the top 10, there's a whole lot of change, it's just that other projects moved up in there, so. Counselor Klein?
So, if we are, if we want to re-adopt the 2024 plan, and go with what we, what we talked about. talked about last year, we have all the Thane corridor study projects that kind of get put to the end because they, they weren't new projects, right? Going through those projects, those Thane corridor projects, I feel like it would be beneficial to move up project 2025-003, the Preston and Thane intersection. If we could move that up to day, number six, and look at that. I know that we had some individuals get hit at that intersection recently, and we've had really bad visualization of being able to see people crossing right there, and I feel like that would be a, I've heard a lot of issues about Preston and Thane intersection. Other than that, most of, most of my, my top projects that I was looking at are at least in the top 20, so I'm okay with it.
Yeah, move, move that one.
Counselors, are we following? Counselor Spickelmeier, are you with us?
Yeah, I can't hear it very well. Catch up later.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Wright?
Yeah, I do see that the 2021-14, that one's also, the draft 2025, it's ranked eight, but 2024 adopted, we have it ranked 30, so that's a pretty big difference. We may want to consider moving that up. Is the road widening, parking sidewalks, shared use path, bike route, curb and gutter.
Background on that one. So when we, this is, you're reading your pocket. I had forgotten about this one. This one is actually in the North Lewiston, and when we put all these criteria together, all treat, all streets are treated, created, treated equal, and so no matter where its location is. And so last year, that one checked a lot of boxes because it's narrow, it doesn't have parking, it doesn't have sidewalks, and I'm not sure what the traffic volume is on it, but I think it was Counselor Spickelmeier who said that due to its location and you, due to, not to say that it wasn't valuable, but that's why that one, where the criteria would probably rank it higher. And so when you ask about why would we do it, they would look at that and say that one's in North Lewiston, probably doesn't serve the same amount of traffic that maybe Main Street or 21st would, and so that's why that one moved it.
Gotcha, okay. Thank you. That, that sounds like we don't want to move that.
Hey, Counselors, if there are no more comments or questions, no more suggestions, then I'm going to close the public hearing.
Thank you, Director. Counselors, next up, we moved to Roman numeral six, Consent Agenda. All items on the Consent Agenda are considered routine by the council and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion on these issues unless the council's request, in which case that will be removed from the Consent Agenda and considered an active agenda under items moved from the Consent Agenda.
Mayor?
Counselor Forssman?
Motion to approve the Consent Agenda as is. Second.
Removed by Counselor Forssman, second by Counselor Schroder to approve the Consent Agenda. Clerk Rocky?
Council President Kleber?
Aye.
Counselor Wright?
Aye.
Counselor Forssman?
Aye.
Counselor Schroder?
Aye.
Counselor Klein?
Aye.
Counselor Spickelmeier?
Aye.
Thank you, Council. Thank you, Clerk Rocky. Next, remove the active agenda, Roman numeral seven, item A, Advisory Board and Commission Appointments. A1, Code Board of Appeals, considering the appointment of Tim Lynch to a three-year term. I'll just tell you, Counsel, that I did spend some time with Mr. Lynch and asked why he'd want to serve, and he was highly complimentary of our staff in community development especially, but in public work, so I'll share that with you. I had some very good things to say about you, so thank you, congratulations. And with that, I would move to approve the appointment of Tim Lynch to a three-year term on the Code Board of Appeals.
Second.
It's been moved by Mayor Johnson, second by Counselor Schroder to approve the appointment of Tim Lynch to a three-year term on the Code Board of Appeals. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Item B, Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, concerning approval of 2024 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. This is an action item only have with us tonight, our Finance Director, Amy Gordon. Amy, welcome. Please introduce yourself for the record, the floor is yours. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, members of Council, Amy Gordon, City Finance Director. This evening, I would like to introduce you to Ms. Dawn Alaverty, Associate Partner with Presnel Gage, who performs the audit for the city of Lewiston. This evening, she'll be presenting to you the financial report for our fiscal year 2024. I would like to extend my gratitude to Dawn and her team for the work that they've done on the audit, their professionalism, their ease of working with. In addition, I would like to thank my staff for all the work that they've put into the audit report this last few months, specifically to our accounting supervisor, Claire Blewett, who orchestrates and strategically puts this book together that Council received earlier today. And then I'd also like to thank the city staff as a whole. We have a lot of staff members who provide input and content for the statistical section, so we really appreciate them dedicating time to that. And then I'd like to thank the members of our Audit Committee who provide that transparency bridge between the city finances and the public. So here is Martha Alaverty to present the financial report.
Thank you, Director.
Oh, and I should add that we did have a work session earlier today where we ran Council through a much detailed presentation of these numbers, so this will be more summarized.
Thank you, Dawn, welcome. Please introduce yourself for the record, and the floor is yours. Thank you.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor and City Council. Thank you for having me here tonight. I'm Dawn Alaverty with Presnel Gage. I'm an audit partner on the engagement and partner in charge of the audit and conducting, conducted by myself and my team. I'm here tonight to formally present the Council the audited financial statement reports for the fiscal year that ended September 30, 2024. We have reviewed the audit process and results with the Audit Committee, as Dr. Cray has already talked about earlier today, which was, the Audit Committee was established approximately, I believe it was 14 years ago, for that transparency purpose. Annual Comprehensive Financial Report is provided, was provided to you, as Amy had identified during the work session, and we went through that in detail. Presnel Gage has performed the city's audit in accordance with auditing standards generally accepted United States of America. Under those standards, it was the objective of the audit to obtain reasonable, not absolute assurance about whether the financial statements are free of material misstatements. Basically, the financial statements and information reported within the annual comprehensive financial report is the responsibility of management and this council, and Presnel Gage is responsible for issuing an opinion on that information provided after the audit is completed. As we talked about earlier in the work session, the audit reports of what belongs to Presnel Gage, the rest of the information is that of the cities. Audit opinions that I alluded to, the first opinion is on page 11. We issued an opinion indicating that the city's financial statements with regard to governmental activity, business-type activity, the component unit, each major fund, and the aggregate remaining funds are fairly presented in all material respects, and this is an unmodified or clean opinion. Additionally, on another opinion on page 164 of the booklet, during our audit, we considered the city's internal control procedures over financial reporting and determined that they have procedures in place to account for the city's funds, and this is a clean report as well. On page 66, we audited, the opinion indicates, we audited the city's compliance with state and federal regulations, along with internal controls over these compliance requirements with regard to federally funded major programs, and we have issued an unmodified or clean opinion on that report as well. There are no questions. We'll formally request the council's authorization to release the audited financial statement that's presented. Before I do so, I also would like to thank Amy and her team and all the staff at the city for making our work as the auditors go as smoothly as it can, and ask a lot of information, and, and not just in the finance committee, we do with a variety of different folks from different departments, and so, I'd like to thank them as well. Mayor, City Council.
Thank you, Dawn. And I'd like to just add to that briefly, Counselors, that throughout the year, Presnel Gage is available and they help us with questions here and there, so I know I've used her, and I just appreciate her service to the city and the good work that she does. Council President Kleber?
Thank you, Dawn.
Kudos, kudos.
Kudos all around.
All righty, Counselors, you have the 2024 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report before you.
Mayor?
Counselor Forssman?
Motion to approve the 2024 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Forssman, second by Counselor Schroder to approve the 2024 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries, thank you, Council, thank you, Dawn, and thank you, Amy and your team for the work that you do here. For us, Counselors, next up, we have item P, Joint Transit Dispatch Services Agreement between the city of Lewiston and Sooton County Public Transportation Benefit Area. Concerning approval of the Joint Dispatch Services Agreement between the city of Lewiston and Sooton County Public Transportation Benefit Area and authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement, this is an action item, Counselors? Questions? Someone up or entertain a motion?
Mayor?
Counselor Klein?
A move to approve the Joint Transit Dispatch Services Agreement between the city of Lewiston and the Sooton County Public Transportation Benefit Area and authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Klein, second by Counselor Schroder to approve the Joint Transit Dispatch Services Agreement between the city of Lewiston and Sooton County Public Transportation Benefit Area and authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement. Further discussion? Clerk Rocky?
Council President Kleber?
Aye.
Counselor Wright?
Aye.
Counselor Forssman?
Aye.
Counselor Schroder?
Aye.
Counselor Klein?
Aye.
Counselor Spickelmeier?
Aye.
Thank you, Council. Thank Clerk Rocky, thank you. Item D, Resolution 2025-06, considering approving the agreement for services between the city of Lewiston and Lewis Clark Valley Metropolitan Planning Organization and authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement. Counselor, this is an action item. Mr. Mayor?
Counsel President Kleber?
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-06.
Second.
It's been moved by Council President Kleber, excuse me, to approve Resolution 2025-06. Further discussion? Hearing none, Clerk Rocky?
Council President Kleber?
Aye.
Counselor Wright?
Aye.
Counselor Forssman?
Aye.
Counselor Schroder?
Aye.
Counselor Klein?
Aye.
Counselor Spickelmeier?
Aye.
Thank you, Council. Next up, we have item E, Paramedic Internship Services Agreement, concerning approving Lewis Clark State College Paramedic Acute Care Clinical Education Agreement between Lewis Clark State College and the city of Lewiston and authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement. We have our fire chief, Greg Reitmeyer, here with us tonight. Chief, welcome. Please introduce yourself for the record, the floor is yours.
Good morning or good afternoon, Council, Mr. Mayor. Before you, as a resolution, it's a agreement between us and LCSC as a college to provide internship for paramedic students that we have attending the program at the college. Our attorney's done a great job about cleaning up some of these agreements that we've had in this one, because it's between a state institution and a municipality within the state requires the governing boards to take action and authorize us to sign that, so business is before you to, direct us to sign that, and then we can get, writing out the field so they can get their student.
Thank you, Chief. Counselors, do you have questions for Chief?
Mayor?
Counselor Forssman?
No question, just a kudos to your team to get this all, all the legal figured out and making sure it's nice and clean. Thank you, Jennifer, for, as always, good work.
Rock star.
I looked, I looked through it, and it's very detailed and covers areas for the people that you're treating, so the citizens, as well as the paramedics and those, the trainees. So it's really good, it's got all that in there, and, and this is a great thing to have for our students to be able to learn, just as hospitals need nurses to be able to go and learn on site, it's really important that they learn on the job. It's a very stressful job, that only probably get real-life experience if you're doing it, so I really condone this, and I'm glad that we work with our college to have this opportunity, and so, just a kudos all around, so thank you for your hard work on this.
Counselor Schroder?
I'd make a motion to approve the Lewis Clark State College Paramedic Acute Care Clinical Education Agreement between Lewis Clark State College and the city of Lewiston and authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement.
Second.
They're moved by Counselor Schroder, second by Counselor Forssman to approve the Lewis Clark State College Paramedic Acute Care Clinical Education Agreement between Lewis Clark State College and the city of Lewiston and authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement. Clerk Rocky?
Council President Kleber?
Aye.
Counselor Wright?
Aye.
Counselor Forssman?
Aye.
Counselor Schroder?
Aye.
Counselor Klein?
Aye.
Counselor Spickelmeier?
Aye.
Thank you, Counselor's motion carries, and as Chief Reitmeyer mentioned, give a shout out to our legal department, they do an incredible job for us, so thank you, Jennifer, for your work on this. Counselors, next up, we have item F.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just one point of interest, I think, for the council, we've got an exciting opportunity in our community. Idaho State University approached LCSC College about perhaps having a remote paramedic program here, and so we're excited to announce that next September, we will have a, the remote learning program, so the, the program's hosted down in Meridian at ISU, and then both in Pocatello, and here in Lewiston, there will be concurrent cohorts of paramedic students, they'll all go to school together online, and then we will have local paramedics who'll administer their lab time, so it's an exciting step forward as we now have a fire science program, both associates and a bachelor's at LCSC, and now we'll be able to, to extend that to an associate's in paramedicine of, or associate's and bachelor's of science in paramedicine. So really great future for people to come here and get their education and participate in our community in providing fire and EMS services.
Awesome. Thank you, that is wonderful, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Counselors, next up, we have item F, Supplemental CNI Agreement, 17th Street Sidewalk Enfield, 13th to 15th, KN23897, TR064, Considering Improvement Supplemental Construction Engineering and Inspection Agreement between Keller and Associates, Thane, the city of Lewiston, and the Idaho Transportation Department for the amount of $60,395 and authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement. This is an action item, we have our Director of Public Works with us here, Director Dustin Johnson, welcome, Director.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Dustin Johnson, Public Works Director. In front of you tonight, basically, the mayor has outlined, this is in front of, I guess it's not technically in front of Jennifer, but it's one block to the south, going up the hill there, if you ever go southbound, you'll notice there's no sidewalk on that side, so we applied for a grant, we received a grant, this is through the local program, well, this is the Transportation Alternatives Program administered to the state of Idaho. If you've noticed in your packet, I tried, this always gets complicated because there's a local match, a 7.34%, but the grant is 92.3%. Three different phases through this, there's the design phase, the construction phase, and what this is, is construction, engineering, and inspection, and so tried to outline, the city's only out $4,432.99 for this contract, but we're receiving over $60,000 in service. receiving over $60,000 in service for the construction administration of this. It's required as part of the grant. This is the game we play when we're going for these grants. So I stand here for questions.
Thank you, Director. Counselors, questions? Counselor Schroder.
I move to approve the supplemental construction, engineering, and inspection agreement between Keller and Associates, Inc., and the City of Lewiston and the Idaho Transportation Department in the amount of $60,395 and authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Schroeder, seconded by Counselor Forsman to approve the supplemental construction, engineering, and inspection agreement between Keller and Associates, Inc., the City of Lewiston, and the Idaho Transportation Department in the amount of $60,395 and authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, Clerk Brockie.
Council President Kleberg.
Aye.
Counselor Wright.
Aye.
Counselor Forsman.
Aye.
Counselor Schroder.
Aye.
Counselor Klein.
Aye.
Counselor Spickelmeier.
Aye.
Thank you, counsel. Next up, Item G, Ordinances Number One, First Reading, A, Ordinance 4937. Excuse me. Considering we're appealing Chapter Seven of Lewiston City Code related to ambulance service and enacting a new Chapter Seven entitled ambulance service, this is an action item. And we have our fire chief, Greg Wrightmeyer, with us here tonight. If welcome, please introduce yourself. For the record, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, counsel, Greg Wrightmeyer, fire chief. Before you tonight is the culmination of almost two years' worth of work, great work again on behalf of our legal staff that has supported the Emergency Medical Services Advisory Board over the couple of years. This was a big chewing into a thirty-year-old city ordinance that initially established the EMS services within the City of Lewiston. And we've done, done a great job of going through. Two years, a year and a half ago, we had you remove the part about membership and put it in Chapter Two where it belongs with all the other advisory board language. And now we've gone through and, and really streamlined and cut the fat out, got it down to what it needs to be to provide good guidance for the council and for the city to be able to move forward in providing, making sure we've got good emergency medical services being provided within the city and guiding us on that. The next step, we'll be getting into developing out rules, procedures, policies that this would be administered under. So this really isn't intended to get down to the exact hows of how certain things will get done, but more to direct that they will get done. So before you, that's been sent out to you, if you have any questions, I stand for that. I'll dig, I'll dig into it. I've got it all marked up in front of me.
Thank you, chief. Counselors.
Counselor Forsman, she can tell you how riveting and exciting this is.
Just go, yep, make a comment. I, obviously, I'm on the NSAB board and they're hired, working, detailed people that are on that board and smart. And it's really nice how much effort they put into that. And there's a lot of, out of, what would you call that? Not regular meetings, out of record, so special meetings that they had in order to wrap this up. And so I just want to, you know, give kudos to those that are on the, on the board and how all the effort and time they put into making sure this is nice and clean and really digging deep and paying attention to what's important for, to provide the best services we can for Lewiston. So, yeah, they're a really good team and I continue to be excited to be a part of that board. And yet, it is very riveting and I learned a lot. So if anybody wants to learn a lot about emergency services, I would suggest you go to those meetings because you get to get in the meaty gritty of it, especially to our counselors, if you want to really know more about this. I highly suggest you come to the meetings and they're all very willing to answer questions and help you learn about it.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Schroder.
I move to approve the first reading of ordinance number 4937.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Schroeder, seconded by Counselor Forsman to approve the first reading of ordinance number 4937. Is there discussion or amendments? Hearing none, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Clerk Brockie.
Approving the first reading of ordinance 4937. An ordinance of the City of Lewiston repealing Chapter Seven of the Lewiston City Code related to ambulance service and enacting a new Chapter Seven entitled ambulance service and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Clerk Brockie. Thank you, Chief Wrightmeyer. Next up, council, we have two, Item Two, Second and Third Readings, A, Ordinance 4932, Considering Implementing the City Council's Decision in CNC24-4, Declaring That Certain Real Property Be Removed From Community Commercial C3 Zone to the Medium Density R3 Zone and Amending the Official Zoning Map of the City of Lewiston. This is an item. Council President Kleberg.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to combine the second and third readings and waive the third, waive the third reading in full.
Second.
Ordinance 4932.
It's been moved by Council President Kleberg, seconded by Counselor Schroeder, to combine the second and third readings and waive the third reading in full of ordinance number 4932. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Council President Kleberg.
I'd make a motion to approve the second and third readings, ordinance 4932.
Second.
It's been moved by Council President Kleberg, seconded by Counselor Schroeder, to approve the second and third readings of ordinance number 4932. Is there discussion or amendments? Hearing none, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Clerk Brockie.
Approving the second and third readings of ordinance 4932. An ordinance of the City of Lewiston implementing the City Council's decision in DNC24-4, declaring that certain real property be removed from the community commercial C3 zone to the medium density residential R3 zone, amending the official zoning map of the City of Lewiston and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Clerk Brockie. Counselors, again, under two, Second and Third Readings, Item B, Ordinance 4935, amending Lewiston City Code Section 37-33 relating to design standards applicable to small lot and zero lot line, small lot developments. This is an action item. We have our Assistant City Planner, Ms. Katie Hollingshead, here. If you need to ask questions, otherwise, entertain a motion. Counselor Schroder.
I move to approve the second and third readings of ordinance number 4935.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Schroeder, seconded by Counselor Wright, to combine this, to approve the second and third readings of ordinance number 4935. Is there discussion or amendments? Hearing none, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Counselor, well, Clerk Brockie.
Mayor, I believe you still have another motion regarding waiving the third reading in full and reading the title before reading the title.
What was supposed to be combined?
So.
It appears one of the notes were left off.
Oh, okay. So now, do I go ahead and combine the two?
We'll make a motion to combine.
I make, okay, so I make a motion to combine the second and third readings of ordinance number 4935. Second.
And, and waive the third reading.
Oh, and waive the third reading in full. Thank you, I didn't see that.
Okay, it's been moved by Counselor Schroeder, seconded by Counselor Wright, to combine the second and third readings and waive the third reading in full of ordinance number 4935. If favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do you need me to restate the second motion, Jennifer?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Clerk Brockie.
Approving the second and third readings of ordinance 4935. An ordinance of the City of Lewiston amending Lewiston City Code Section 37-33 relating to design standards applicable to small lot and zero lot line, small lot developments and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Clerk Brockie. Counselors, Item C, Ordinance 4939, amending Lewiston City Code Sections, oh, Counselor Klein.
Can I just ask Jennifer a quick question?
You may.
So with ordinance 4932, was she allowed to second because she wasn't allowed to vote?
Yes, she was able to. The, the rules under Title 67, Chapter 35 relate to the decision-making process. She had a conflict of interest under those rules. Once the decision-making process has been decided, so a decision to approve it, City Code says that the council shall approve the, adopt the ordinance. And so there is no decision-making process that she would be participating in that would affect that particular application. Because at that point, it's not discretionary and it's a compulsive order, order of the city code based on the approval of the application.
Counselor, thank you for asking.
I don't want to do it again.
I do not want to do this again, ever.
Okay. Counselors, we're under the Second and Third Readings, Item C, Ordinance 4939, amending Lewiston City Code Sections 37-93F and 37-145 related to off-street parking requirements and allowances in the form and impact based zone, amending Lewiston City Code Section 37-149 relating to the minimum and maximum parking requirements based on land use. This is an action item. Counselor Schroder.
I move to approve the second and third readings of ordinance number 4939.
Jennifer, do we need to combine them?
Somehow, those, those got deleted off of, so, yes, the first one would be a motion to combine the second and third readings and waive the third reading in full of ordinance 4939.
Thank you, Jennifer. Counselor Schroder.
That one. I move to approve the second and third readings of ordinance number 4939 and waive the third reading in full.
Yes.
Okay. So am I done?
Done, if we have a second. It's been moved by Counselor Schroeder, seconded by Counselor Forsman, to combine the second and third readings and waive the third reading in full of ordinance number 4939. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Counselor Schroder.
I move to approve the second and third readings of the ordinance.
Please state the ordinance.
Oh, I'm sorry. 4939. Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Schroeder, seconded by Counselor Forsman, to approve the second and third readings of ordinance number 4939. Is there discussion or amendments?
I have a just question on, on this one. Yeah, is, is this in all residential zones as well?
Evening, council. Katie Hollingshead, Assistant Planner. So residential zones for like single-family dwellings and duplexes are treated differently. It would still be covered under the same section 37, but they're limited. So a single-family house is by number of bedrooms up to a maximum of four, so that would half to two. And then duplexes are treated the same. And then if you have three or more, then you fall into the multi-family section.
Okay. And what about colleges and hospitals?
They're also covered in, they're under institutions. So they're separate. They have a fractional equation that is done by number of dorms. Usually, it's associated with the, like the living spaces, not just the college itself.
Okay. So us changing the minimum, which I believe was from 120 down to 50, that's not going to change the rules that we have in place for the college or for?
It would change the rules for the college because they would half the minimum. The code amendment is a half just across the board, so.
Across the board.
Yep, across.
Half.
Every use that is listed, the, both the Work Plan Committee and the Planning and Zoning Commission deliberated over this and decided rather than go through the hundreds of different uses that are called out in code, given that it's not what their expertise is, is the number of parking spaces that each use requires, that it made more sense to do a blanket reduction by half.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Counselors, any further comments or questions of Katie Hollingshead?
Thank you.
Counselors, I'll restate the motion here. The motion was to approve the second and third readings of ordinance number 4939. It was moved by Counselor Schroeder, seconded by Counselor Forsman. Is there further discussion or amendments? If not, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Carries. Clerk Brockie.
Approving the second and third readings of ordinance 4939. An ordinance of the City of Lewiston amending Lewiston City Code Sections 37-93.F and 37-145 related to off-street parking requirements and allowances in the form and impact-based FIB zone, amending Lewiston City Code Section 37-149 relating to the minimum and maximum parking requirements based on land use and providing an effective date.
Thank you, counselors. Next up, we move to Item Three, Adoption or Approval of Ordinance Sumories. Ordinance A, number A, letter A, ordinance 4932, letter B, ordinance 4935, and letter C, ordinance 4939. Council President Kleberg.
May I make a motion to adopt ordinances 4932, 4935, and 4939 and to approve the related ordinance summaries?
Second.
It's been moved by Council President Kleberg, seconded by Counselor Forsman, to adopt ordinances numbers 4932, 4935, and 4939 and to approve the related ordinance summaries. Clerk Brockie.
Council President Kleberg.
Aye.
Counselor Wright.
Aye.
Counselor Forsman.
Aye.
Counselor Schroder.
Aye.
Counselor Klein.
Aye.
Counselor Spickelmeier.
Aye.
Thank you, counselors. Next up, we have Roman numeral nine, unfinished to new business, Item A. City Council comments. Comments should not be related to an item currently for the council or an item that may come before the council in the foreseeable future. They shall be limited to comments, not discussion. Council President Kleberg.
Oh, I just have one. It's that time of year again. I'd like to wish my wife a happy birthday, which is coming up at the end of the week. And those of you who heard it before, this year she'll be 16.25 years old.
I think you're underage there, sir.
Well, we wish her a happy birthday. Thank you.
Happy birthday.
Thank you, Council President. Counselor Klein, or pardon me, Counselor Forsman, didn't mean to scare you. Counselor Forsman.
Um, I don't have much. I don't hold today, surprisingly. But if anybody does have something they want to bring to me, maybe a kudos they want me to bring at council, I am more than willing to give up some of my time to highlight, whether that be staff or something, someone has seen within the city, maybe someone did something amazing and helped a citizen and they'd like to highlight that person, I'd be more than willing to talk about it. Sometimes I run out of things to say, but I think it's important that we, as council, share good news and movements that we're making. And so, please feel free to reach out to me or email me, call me, whatever form you like to use, and I'll be willing to do that. Or new business, too. I can announce that, too, if we get some new businesses.
Thank you, counselor. Other council comments? I'll jump into Item B, City Boards and Commissions Liaison Updates. Updates night, Counselor Klein.
I've got airport board update. Delta may be bringing in additional flights this summer. They, let's see. Oh, and the county may be interested in bringing up, surplusing the land again that surplusing the land again that we had or own, so we might be meeting about that again in the future.
Thank you, counselor.
Mayor.
Counselor Forstman.
Uh, as you know, I already gave the NSAB update, so I won't give that one again. But, uh, Public Works canceled. They had a cancellation. I'm not sure, maybe not enough people to attend? Oh, okay, sorry. All right, we had to cancel that due to scheduling and workload. Uh, and Valley Vision, uh, I just got on that board and I had two meetings, an introduction meeting, and then they had a special meeting. Uh, and it's really good to be a part of it and they're really working hard to hopefully grow our economic growth here and, and bring some big businesses. Hopefully that can help us and grow our tax base. And so, yeah, I'm excited to be, uh, part of that board. It is a hard one to be a part of because the businesses that they're trying to talk to and work into the valley, you have to be careful and you can't, you know, say that because that, that business has the right to their privacy. So I will give as much update as I can, but without giving too much that I shouldn't be giving away. Um, but yeah, it's a good board to be a part of, so I look forward to more growth that they have to provide.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Schroeder.
Yes, I have an apology. I, uh, was cleaning after getting Christmas all put away and I just, um, forgot what time it was and did not make it to the MPO meeting, and I truly apologize. I get really frustrated when people don't come to those meetings, and here I did it. I heard the clock go off at one, two, and then after that, I never heard the clock tell me what time it was.
Start it on the Zoom.
Otherwise I would have gone down at that point.
The show went on.
In dirty clothes.
Thank you. Okay, Mayor comments. Um, counselors, I'm going to ask for your help. We have openings on most of these boards and commissions. Um, the numbers aren't important, but Cemetery and Urban Forestry Commission, we're looking for some more servants, Compensation Review Committee. Uh, we do that every other year, and it used to be that, uh, the council would kind of gather around and talk about compensation for the counselors. Um, we now have what's called a Compensation Review Committee. They meet every other year about this time of the year. It's five members, I think. Is that correct? Five members are on that. So we need members of the public to serve on that. It's a short-term committee. It's two months, maybe. Um, they'll have to have a recommendation to the council by June one, uh, but it's very important. We need five members, so please, let's get that filled. And they can be friend or foe, it doesn't matter, but we want to hear from them and get them on that committee. Um, Code Board of Appeals, uh, we're looking for some members. Urban Renewal Agency, I think we're still looking for one, maybe, uh, Audit Committee yet. Uh, we have some great members, but we have an opening there. Library Board of Trustees, I think, has an opening. Parks and Recreation Commission, um, has an opening and Public Works Advisory Commission, is my understanding. So please, um, visit with , uh, members of our community and if there's somebody that's interested in serving, we can certainly use their help and would welcome them to the team. Um, yeah, so that's it for my comments.
Mayor, I just had a question. Do we reach out to the people that were interested in the council spot to see if maybe they would at least want to be a part of some of those boards? Or is that maybe a good way to start?
Um, well, we can certainly take a look at that. Um, I don't know if they said that, but, uh, we're going to have these be advertised. We're, we're already advertising these. Clerk Brockie, where do we advertise these currently?
Mayor, can you repeat that?
Where are we advertising these openings currently?
Currently, they're on the city website. Um, I'm working with the Public Outreach Coordinator on getting a social media post, and I believe they're also going to be posted in, um, the quarterly magazine once that goes out.
Thank you. I'd say probably the most urgent one is our Compensation Review Committee. Uh, we need to get that assembled quickly and, um, have them meet so they can do their work and get it back to you by June first. Um, and what they'll do, we did this two years ago, is they'll review the, um, council, uh, compensation package and the mayor's compensation package, and then they will make a recommendation back to this council. And then you'll have a chance to, uh, ask them questions and then vote on that. But we need to get that filled and we need to get that work turned in to us. So that's an important part to do that.
It's just a one and done, isn't it? One, you just do it once every two years.
Once every two years, yeah. Yeah, it'll go quick. And I think we have, do we have staff on that that helps out with that, Amy? Uh, we have, you know, individuals, uh, some of our team members from finance will help the committee get lined up on that. So that brings us to Roman numeral ten, adjournments.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Been moved by Counselor Schroeder, seconded by Counselor Forstman to adjourn. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Close. Motion carries to adjourn. Thank you.